Thirty, I'll call our council meeting to order. First call is pledge of allegiance and wish councilman McClinton allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor of Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state of God and God, one indivisible.
We have one agenda item that we're going to pull from tonight, so I just make that mention, the proclamation we put off for two weeks, the group wasn't able to be here tonight with all enough people. Next item is our invocation by Ed Dittfer. Everybody in Eretown County knows Ed. I want everybody to know this, he probably does for other people too. About once every two weeks, I get an email from him or a text message, I've been praying for you today, and he actually tells me what he's prayed about. I appreciate that more than I can tell you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council, thank you, staff, for being able to be here. Our invocation today will be underpinned by Psalm 127 that begins, unless the Lord builds a house, those who build labor in vain; unless the Lord watches over the city, the watchmen stay awake in vain. Would you pray with me? Father in heaven, we thank you that we have the honor to live and serve in the city of Champions. We pray today for your help personally, help us to be the best that we can be for your glory. We pray for your help professionally, that the decisions that are made will be in the best interest of our citizens and for the future of this great city. We pray, Lord, that the purpose of Steenfield will be fulfilled by your wisdom and your divine direction. May you watch over the city. May your divine direction and your peace guide us to a broader future. We thank you for your helps. We pray this in the strong name of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you, sir. Next is the oath of office for a new police officer. Can I turn that over to the chief?
Yes, sir.
So you got your hat on.
Yes, sir. Officer Blue, last time had been banned.
Oh, okay.
So, Mr. Mayor, this thing was members of the council, it's always our honor to bring our newest police officers and lateral officer to you as City Secretary, we'll swear him in in just a second. But first, I want to tell you just a couple of things about him and then have his wife, Melissa, pin his badge on him. So, a father of four, three boys and one girl. We've got them all here but one, who's in college right now, but comes to us from Butte, Montana, where he was a sergeant there and with the Butte Police Department for 14 years, and then was two years with Chinook Police Department in Montana prior to that. But a drug recognition expert, a plethora of a great resume for us. Melissa and him have been married for 19 years and together for 23 years. We decided about that and having them here, he's also served five years in the Marine Corps with one tour in Iraq. And so, we are honored to swear him in today. Will you pin his badge first, please?
He keep party's big guys.
Go raise your right hand and repeat after her.
Right, I state your name.
Aye, Greg Blue.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
I will faithfully.
Execute.
Execute.
The duties of the office.
Duties of the office.
Of police officer.
Of police officer.
Of the city of Steenfield.
Of the city of Steenfield.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And of this state.
Of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, welcome to Steenfield, Texas.
Thank you, sir.
Next item is citizens' general discussion, do we have anybody? Anybody else want to come up? All right. Next item will be regular agenda is Sarah, going to give us an update on records management?
So, when we requested the city deputy city secretary position back in budget season, the primary job of that position is records management, digitizing and making a plan for going forward digital for the city. So, since about November, when we really got going, we've processed about 11,000 records. That's just been in Laserfish, which is our digital repository system. So, we've been putting templates on all of those records, metadata to help with searchability, just really cleaning up what's already digitized. We still have about 130,000 digital records to file through. So, our next department to work with is going to be probably Development Services and Administrative Services. They're just the departments that are already the most digital, so it makes sense to start with them. And again, that's just, we don't see a good, it's not a good idea to start adding more, you know, scanning and adding more to something that's not well organized and not very searchable. So, that's where we're at right now.
Questions? I'm just surprised that the fire chief doesn't come in here and condemn the building because of all the paper records and everything. There was on fire.
We've had conversations.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate that. You'll be coming back like once a quarter or something.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next item, I guess it's going to be Steve. Did you hear what he said?
I did not hear.
Okay, he said, uh-oh.
But did you hear what she said? I think she said Development Services might be one of the most technologically.
Yeah, she said something like that, I'm not sure exactly what.
Mayor, Council, we have Stacy Morrison with Habitat with Humanity here tonight, and she is requesting some waiver of fees for property on Walnut. She has built three properties or three single-family residents on that parcel in the past. She has one property left, this is the last one that she has available, and she is looking for some fee waivers for the city-related fees. So, I have in your staff report estimated fees are roughly $4,518. That includes $2,000 worth of water and sewer taps. Water and sewer taps are actually hard cost dollars for us, whereas others are basically staff time and plan review. I don't believe this is going to require any civil review by our third party, so it should just be the 4518 roughly for any type of consideration on the fee waiver. Trying to be short and succinct on this because Stacy does have a senior and she has a performance tonight, so she's hoping she can make it to the performance this evening. But if you have any questions, be glad to answer that. She's going to build a 1,000-square-foot, single-family residential structure. Currently, the property is zoned R3 and single-family is a permitted use for that particular property.
Questions for Steve?
Five, one, Steve, I know we've done these kind of waivers in the past. Have we done the water and sewer waivers along with that? Or has it just been city fees, I believe?
I believe it's only been city fees in the past, yes, sir.
Anybody else? Harry, now do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we approve this waiver for the city fees only excluding water and sewer taps, as we've done in the past.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item.
Thank you, sir. The next item is also a fee waiver from Habitat for Humanity. This is for property on Drew Street. He's currently working with the property owner on maybe acquiring that property. If it is acquired, there will be a replat and a rezoning fee. Total estimate at this time is $620 for the fee waiver request. This is again on Drew Street, I guess north of the South Loop.
Questions for Steve? Harry, now do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the waiver request as presented.
Have a motion as second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Mayor, the council.
Ms. Morrison, thank you for all your input.
Absolutely. I didn't go to your seniors event. You want to upset us, probably, but it's important. Hey, that's important. Item number four, I guess it's going to be Jason.
So, I provided for you a letter from Ms. Miriam Callahan, and she's requesting the waiver of the hotel occupancy taxes, penalty, and interest for February through December 2023, the total of which would be $1,001.23. This is on a short-term rental that she has here in Steenfield, and she wasn't collecting the tax. So, anyways, and we haven't gotten the reports, so we got her to send the reports in. They use Airbnb. We've had several of the short terminal people that tell us that they've had problems with Airbnb getting that extra 9% added on. But, I mean, there's other entities out there that have managed to get it done, and then also there are other verbo and other ones that do have the availability to do that, so.
Questions?
And she's here, if you have questions for her.
Any questions?
I guess my only question would be the length of time. Why is it taking us so long to get to this?
Yes, yes.
Come to the microphone, you give your name and address.
Thank you.
My name is Miriam Callahan, and my address is 7228 Emerald Drive, Brownwood. And it has been nothing but a headache, and I think the problem, as you were kind of hinting around, is Airbnb. But I certainly didn't know that when I started. I've had two other Airbnbs and I never had city tax, so I didn't expect it. And I didn't get the letter till around the end of May, 1st of June. And I started having discussions physically coming and phone calls that aren't on the record here, lots of them, trying to solve it with Deanna Salsada. She tried to help me, Airbnb, I've spent on the phone for like two 45-minute phone calls with supervisors and IT people. And basically, what it boils down to is they should be able to remove the tax from the guests. I should not have to pay it. Personally, the guests should pay it. It should be added to the state tax, it's already on there. But their system does not allow for that, and I've tried every techie person I know to try to help me. In fact, a local super host with Airbnb, Deanna, connected me with her, and she was able to do it. So, she's one person who does, and it looks like I'm trying not to comply. She took me through 14 steps, I did everything she said to do, and at the last step, we took screenshots of her computer and my computer, mine did not have custom tax option that she did. So, she could add it and I can't. So, that's why I haven't been able to do it, and I've been very frustrated over it. And then finally, after several more phone calls and attempts back and forth in February, I think it was, I just said, the only thing I know to do is just raise my rates and just I'll pay it. So, that's what I've been doing. I paid January and February out on my own money, and I'm certainly committed to paying it from now on. I just wasn't able to work it out. Hopefully, that's helpful.
Mark, do you have a question? Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Just for council's knowledge, we did reach out to Mr. Thomas. There is no provision in the ordinance that allows for a waiver. There's nothing in state law.
Nothing to keep you from doing, either.
Right.
Excuse my voice, okay?
Did you have advice? You said, in your email to us, you said you would not advise to do it.
Yeah. You can do it, I wouldn't advise. I don't believe it set any kind of precedent, but in this case, if I understand the collection process, there's several that are heading this way, so I think it'd be inadvisable if you did it. Really, it was your place to collect it.
If somebody told me back in June, when I first spoke to the city, that you're just going to need to pay that out of your own pocket if you can't figure it out, I would have done that right away. But they always told me Airbnb will do it for you.
What were they telling you, they weren't getting it?
Well, she knew Deanna Salsada, knew my multiple attempts back and forth.
Monica, if we didn't approve the waiver, would you do a payment plan to help her out?
We always work with people. In fact, on this one, I stopped the, you know, I got her to fill out all the forms for us, so we basically kind of stopped the penalty and interest until a decision could be made.
And I would say for myself, I didn't even know about, I couldn't have collected in February and March and April of May, because I didn't even know there was such a thing until the 1st of June, so I couldn't have collected it.
Randy, would there be an issue with the penalties and interest? You're keeping the tax.
You guys, in this case, can almost do what you want to do.
Do you have a recommendation?
I would ask the council to consider waiving the penalties and interest, but the tax would still be enforced.
One second. Have a motion as second. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Mr. Basket?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Mayor. On February 20th, 2024, the Development Services Committee met. The members that were present were myself, Leanne, Derfie, and Martin Clinton. And at the meeting, Steve Gillian provided a brief overview of the materials that were presented and made by the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Panel on February 13th, 2024. Mr. Gillian also presented an overview of the proposed schedule. Mr. Gillian responded to the affirmative that the follow-up discussions occurred with Linehart at the conclusion of the advisory panel meeting, and staff would solicit input from the Planning and Zoning Commission in relation to the final draft of the Comprehensive Plan once it was received. Since then, no new updates. We have a meeting tomorrow night at 6:00 PM.
6:00 PM.
And that would be located.
Bond auditorium.
Bond auditorium. So, I would encourage everybody to attend that can and give your input, and so we can get this report wrapped up and beg for full approval. And that concludes the Development Services Committee.
It's been a big chore, David and Steve, appreciate all the work. Did somebody have ones?
I can take care of it.
Okay. Parks and Leisure, and I'll turn it over to Jason.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. On February 20th, the Parks and Leisure Services Committee met specifically to talk about waterproofing of the rec hall. We had included $50,000 in the budget this year to accomplish that. Staff is recommending entering into an agreement with Patuxnet Roofing to accomplish that, and their quote has come in under budget at $38,447. And so, after discussion that night, the Parks and Leisure Services Committee made a positive recommendation to the full council to do the agreement with Patuxnet.
Questions? Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion that we approve the agreement to waterproof the rec hall as presented.
Second. Have a motion as second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Ms. Smith?
All righty. At our nominations committee on February 20th, one thing on the agenda, and that was appointing the last three members to the Parks and Leisure Board. The nominees, the people who requested to be on there were Faye Hodges, Kendall Hurley, Drew Robinson, and Cheryl Wells. And then after some discussion, we brought to council a positive recommendation to nominate Faye Hodges, Kendall Hurley, and Drew Robinson to the Parks and Leisure Service Advisory Board.
Can we make that as one motion?
Then we do three.
Do we have to do three motions or can we do one? To just brought unanimous. Do we have to have three votes or can we do one, all three? You do all three at one time?
So, I'd like to make the motion to appoint Faye Hodges to the Parks and Leisure Service Advisory Board.
Second.
Have a motion as second for the discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Kendall Hurley to the Parks and Leisure Service Advisory Board.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
And I'd like to make the motion that we appoint Drew Robinson to the Parks and Leisure Service Advisory Board.
Second. Have a motion as second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
And with that, all boards and committees are full.
Good job.
It doesn't happen very often.
No.
Years I've been up here. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Harris?
Mayor, Council, this is the financial report for the financial statements ending January 31st, 2024. We're four months into our fiscal year. Our financial indicators are overall as or better than we would anticipate. We received 3.5 million in our property taxes in the month of January. This is 434,000 increase over the funds collected last fiscal year to date. We're 96% of our budget, and that's about 102,000 more than anticipated. If you remember last month and the months before, we'd kind of been running behind, and now we see that we're a little bit more. I think what you saw is people were feeling the pinch of the economy, and so they kind of waited till the last minute, the January 31st, to get the majority of their property taxes paid. We received 790,000 in sales tax in January, which is 91,000 or 3% more than the funds collected fiscal year to date. We've collected 36% of our budget, and that's about 307,000 higher than anticipated. Of the 17.9 million revenue received to date, 67% was in the general fund, 24 was received in the water wastewater fund, and 2% was received in the landfill fund. We have received 46% of our total budgeted revenues through January. That's 1.7 more than anticipated, and that's due to taxes, building permits, intergovernmental investment income and debt proceeds. We did receive the 500,000 from the county for the senior center.
Thank you to the county?
Huh?
Thank you to the county?
Yes.
Joe Brown?
Yes. We received 131,000 less revenue through January than last fiscal year to date, and that was because we had debt proceeds last year on the compactor, I believe it was. Of the 14 million spent in our expenditures, 46% was expended in general fund, 46% was expended in the water wastewater fund, and then 3% was expended in our landfill fund. We've expended 20% of our total budgeted expenditures through January. That's 7.3 million less than what we anticipated, and that's due to personnel vacancies, contractual, and then our capital outlay. We spent 200,000 more in expenditures through January than last fiscal year to date. That's due to personnel and equipment maintenance. CETA has received an overall 38% of their budgeted revenue through January. That's 12,000 more than last fiscal year to date and 50,000 more than anticipated. And of course, that's due to their only two sources of income is interest and taxes. CETA has been an overall 11% of their budgeted expenditures through January. That is 121,000 less than last fiscal year to date, and that's due to contractual and grant dispersments, and 396,000 less than anticipated due to contractual capital outlay and grant dispersments. Are there any questions?
Questions for Monica?
Monica, just point of information, debt service, we spend so little, when does that bill come due?
February. So, the majority of our, all of our bonds are February is the big payments, and then August on those, so.
One question for Monica. Thank you, ma'am. Have a consent agenda, do I hear a motion?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Okay, have a motion as second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. City manager?
Yes. Only comment I have this time is we had our fly-in farmer's market and car show out at the airport last weekend, and it was a tremendous success. And so, I want to thank Mr. Brown and Ashley and Michaela and Sean and everybody else for all of their hard work in getting that pulled off.
and everybody else for all of their hard work in getting that pulled off.
No comment.
No comment.
I just also wanted to praise the committee for getting the fly-in. It was a great turnout. It was, it was great to see everybody out there. And then I'd also like to thank all of the citizens for their willingness to serve on committees and boards. They don't realize how much they really do for the city, and it's volunteer, and we really appreciate it. And I'd like to wish my son a happy 10th birthday.
That's a good one.
Yep.
David?
I have a birthday moment.
Yeah.
First, I want to congratulate our Parks and Rec Superintendent Darren and his wife Hillary for the birth of their brand-new baby girl two days ago, I think, or yesterday, yesterday. So I know you are at home and watching this right now because you have nothing else to do, so congratulations. Also, I want to tell everybody in the audience that's sitting here, thank you for coming out today. And I know, I know what y'all are all here wanting us to talk about, and we'll, we'll get to it. And we are working on it, just so you know.
No comments.
Two things, Mr. Mayor, I want to give a shout out. I went out, been out to the landfill a couple of times in the last couple of weeks. And if you haven't gone out and seen the landfill, you should. It is, the transformation out there from five, six years ago to what it is today is just, it's phenomenal. So Nick and your bunch, Terry, and everybody involved out there, man, fantastic work. And then I'll give a shout out to Officer Bridges. He took me on a ride out last week. I learned all the things you don't want to do late on a Saturday night if you don't want to be stopped. So thank you for that information. Shout out to Officer Bridges. Had a good time.
Did he change any behavior?
He told me to be in by 9:40.
Can I add one more thing?
Yes, you can.
I want to also thank Nick and his career for the job you are doing down in Braywind and cleaning out that swamp area, marsh. It looks great, and I appreciate everything you are doing.
I just want to mention the landfill. Nick, we're still on schedule?
Yes, sir.
Nick's been working really hard on that, he and Terry and other staff. The landfill, if we get our approval, it'll save us 10 years of not having landfill. Probably save us 15, 20 million dollars in costs. And will allow us to do some things landfilling right now. So I appreciate all the work you're doing. Also to our consultant in Austin for their help. The last thing is, I have, is it tomorrow or tonight, Jason and I go to Austin, and we have a meeting, we don't have an answer yet, but we think we do, with Texas Aviation and the FAA on the runway extension. So hopefully we'll have some good news tomorrow. And with that, we have an odd agenda because of, it has to be done in order this way. So the next thing we're going to do is we're going to recess into the workshop back room, and we're going to have a work session. And then we're going to come back out here and reconvene, and we have some budget amendments that will come from that work session. And then we'll, after that, we'll go into executive session and then have to come back out again. So I'm sorry for the in and out, but it has to be done that way because of the order of business. So at this point, it's 5:58, and we will recess into council work session.
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion to approve it as discussed in the public work session. Budget adjustment from the city's street repairs and maintenance fund to for $230,000 into the public safety salary pay plan as presented.
I guess two will that be two separate motions?
Yes.
Motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion to approve budget adjustments to move $80,000 from the street repairs and maintenance fund to the non-public safety general fund employees.
Second. Have a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. It is now 6:19 and we're going to go back into executive session and we'll be back in a little while. Twenty seven, I call it back in our executive session into council. We have a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we grant deed to property located in South Side Edition as discussed in executive session.
Have a motion second for discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. It is 6:28. All of our business been concluded. Will Staniger.
Thank you.